Good evening, it's six forty-five and I'll call the October ninth State of Oregon's Public School Board meeting to order. And if you would rise with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I'd like to be just visited by the United States of America and to the recalling of which is standing as my nation under God. And it is all with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we will call, we do have trustee Misty Bowser remotely on the phone. She's right here, Misty, you're on speaker, so Secretary Slager, if you'd like to commence with.
Trustee Bowser.
Here.
Trustee Patton.
She, oh, she's ill, sorry.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Here.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slager.
Here.
Vice President Shoffner.
Here.
President Reed.
Here. Thank you, and we have established a quorum that is present, and then we also have trustee Bowser on the phone, so we're fully covered for this evening. Our next item is the adoption of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So move it.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yeah.
President Reed, yes. The agenda is adopted, and that brings us to gratitudes, and I'm going to open up the tables to share gratitude.
I'm grateful, of course. I'm grateful for how smoothly Red Flannel, um, the Red Flannel Band Competition went, um, and the band held off. Until near the end of the parade.
Yes, and I, I would echo that, and then too, just even with the homecoming game and all the festivities with that, I, I know it was wet and rainy as well, but I, I felt like everyone just made the best of it and, and did what they could, so, yeah, very grateful for all those involved in the team pulling together for that.
Okay, Sutton started clapping when our band was going by, Mr. Smith was marching with, so that was a great part for our band.
Yeah, I just really appreciate the community coming out for Red Flannel and just the support that we have from everybody. To see our schools and our students in the parade and other community members, it just was a good time, good show.
Yeah, an interesting, interesting vantage point, I was walking behind the Red Hawk, and it was just so cool to see just the pure joy in the faces of uh, the students, younger students typically, but as, as the Red Hawk went by and waved at people, just the incredible joy that I saw on people's faces. It's a great reminder of what community can do and what needs to be a part of them.
All right, moving on, we have the high school representatives, and do we have, we do, welcome to the podium, and if you'd like to tell us who you are.
I'm Jay Johnson, I'm part of the sophomore student council. Overall, um, things been pretty well, we had eight hundred and fifty students attend the homecoming dance. Yes, um, the theme was roaring twenties. Um, the power cuff game went well, the seniors won six zero. Um, student council has made two thousand dollars from the game, um, six hundred fans attended the game. Homecoming certainly went well, the freshmen won the spirit week, um, for the second time in as many years and ever, so second time ever freshman won it as well as they won it last year, and I would say I was part of that first freshman class. All right, and then the homecoming king was Dylan LaBonsi, and homecoming green was Tennessee Trackswor. Um, and Jake fell first for us for one three innings, I'm a senior, and Lisa Shaw is a English teacher for the future of the girls, and that's all I got.
Well, thank you for that update.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My son was a cheerleader for that, the powder, powder puff. I've got some fun videos and photos.
It was wonderful, it was very nice weather. Okay, moving on to our consent items, I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So move it.
Support.
Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yeah.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. That brings us to our discussion items, the beginning of them, and first up, we have the overnight field trip requests.
So we have two, uh, of our amazing staff members here this evening, Shay Rogers is here to share about the East Coast trip. Uh, and Brent Willett is here to share about the upcoming FFA national event.
Good evening, everybody, so my name is Shay Rogers, I'm here on behalf of myself and Dean Eklund, so we're kind of sharing the responsibility now of this post-trip, and um, so historic trip to the East Coast of the United States, uh, the proposed dates for that are, uh, June fifteenth of next summer and returning June twenty-first. Um, all cost of the trip is going to be up to the student cost, seventeen hundred dollars man, or seventeen hundred forty-nine dollars, and we are anticipating around a hundred and thirty students to attend this year.
Will there be any fundraising opportunities for those students to cut that down a little?
Yeah, and we're looking back at the strip gift cards, I know that's something we've done in the past, but when I looked at it recently, it looks like they're under a different name, it's no longer strip, but it's still the same process, so that is something that we're looking at getting started, um, and advertising for our families that want to cut down the cost.
The music boosters does that program, so you can ask, they would be helpful in.
Absolutely, yeah, it's my responsibility to get their tone, but that is fair.
Just, do you, do you remember how much it was last year, I was just curious how much the price increased?
It was around, um, I think it was sixteen forty-nine or sixteen ninety-nine, so it was between fifteen hundred dollars, and what I'm told is because of the busing and the price of, uh, fuel for the buses, it's not quite a bit, um, but
Thank you. Thank you for leading that adventure.
It works, thank you guys, have a good one.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
All right, guys.
Good.
Good. Um, so, uh, national convention is upon us again, um, yearly trip, uh, as many of you know. Uh, this year we have, uh, again, we're representing the state of Michigan, um, and agronomy, which we did last year as well, different group of kids this year. Um, and agriculture, technology, and mechanical system, along with there. Um, so eight students competing nationally, and I have one to two students, uh, traveling for the, what we call the experience trip, uh, this year, so nine to ten kids, uh, in general, cost of trip, um, is up from four hundred to six hundred, um, and that's because of busing and hotels. Um, so we travel with Caledonia High School and Carolina Tech Center, and just for the three schools together, our shared bill is twelve, fourteen thousand dollars for four days, and you can just do hotels, so expensive trip, we try to keep the trip cost low, fundraising suits that, uh, experience trip of all summer. Um, to fundraise kind of the year before, um, they kind of know who they are ahead of time, and then the eight that are competing, uh, it's an all-inclusive trip, they don't pay a thing, FFA, and our city of FFA, I'm going to put the bill, I don't forget, and the kids are encouraged pretty much with a hundred dollars instead. Any questions?
We answered it already.
Yeah. Very clear and concise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the next meeting.
Thank you, Brent.
Okay, moving on to discussion, and B, the whole class novels for high school courses recommendation for consideration.
So this item is on the agenda, it's the fourth opportunity that we've had to discuss it and review it. The, um, novels had, um, been, um, up for review for twenty-eight days at our last, uh, meeting, and so we couldn't put it action on it because our policy states that they need be available for review for thirty days. Um, no one has, uh, uh, expressed interest in reviewing any of the novels from the community, uh, and so there have been no questions, uh, or objections to any of the content.
And that is on for action tonight, episode four. No question. Okay. Moving on, we have discussion item C, the OK Conference Resolution, and Scott is presenting.
So, the OK Conference has served, um, to support extracurricular activities in the area of athletics in Kent and Ottawa County for sixty-five years. Um, subsequent expansions have, uh, brought the presence of the conference into Mon Cal County, into Meskegan County, uh, neighboring counties, um, and, and so as the conference in its excellence and quality of service to districts and student athletes has, uh, evolved over the course of its sixty-five year existence, uh, it has also grown in size and scale. And, um, as such, uh, and as districts have changed and grown, there has been need to make adjustments to the alignment within the conference. So currently, the OK Conference, uh, is made up of forty-eight schools. Um, those schools like the conference has, have evolved over time, some have increased enrollments, some have decreased enrollment, there have been changes in fluidity to, um, many aspects of the athletic programming, including offerings, uh, opportunities for rainbow partnerships, and so when a rainbow partnership is when, um, districts from multiple divisions come together, pool their athletes together so that they can compete in, uh, maybe some of the less popular sports, uh, like hockey, uh, or lacrosse. So there have been a variety of, um, of changes that have gone about, uh, within the OK Conference itself. One of the things that the conference did, uh, in response to changing demographics within the county, within the boundaries of the conference, was to, um, go through a realignment process. And so during the realignment process, uh, a subcommittee of the conference leadership would look at district demographics, they would look at uh, size of, uh, student population, student enrollment, they would also look at geographic location within the conference, and then come up with new alignment proposals. Um, one of the upsides to realignment is it allows districts to maintain, um, competitive, um, experiences with similar sized districts. One of the downsides to realignment is that as the conference grew geographically, it created, uh, further distances for districts to have to travel within their division, depending on how big we're starting. So, um, it, it feels like the, the conferences on both ends, so the OK red and the OK silver, the OK red being made up of the largest districts, the OK silver being made up of the smallest districts, typically those conference alignment, uh, divisions remain rather set. The districts in the OK red have been in the OK red for an extended period of time, with the exception of the addition of Genesee and Caledonia within the last ten years, those OK red conference schools have been very solid in their conference alignment grouping. Similarly, the, the OK silver school, with the exception of an occasional smaller district moving into or out of the silver, um, that, that alignment division has maintained, uh, a, a, a relative measure of stability. Um, districts like Cedar Springs, uh, who has experienced, uh, an enrollment increase and now an enrollment decline, we've really experienced several different groupings of, um, of alignments over the last twenty years. Um, the downside of that is, i- in the eyes of our coaches and, and members of our community, it's very difficult for us to develop those rivalry opponents, those schools which we have a longstanding relationship of competition and camaraderie with. Uh, because when you're always jumping from conference division to conference division, it's difficult to build a, any type of lengthy relationship. And so, um, when the latest, uh, version of the, the latest proposal passed, uh, for conference alignment last spring, uh, it moves Cedar Springs into the OK Black Conference, competing against Greenville, Kennel Hills, Lowell, um, but then taking us over to the Lake Shore to compete against Monashore's Meskegan, Reese Puffer, uh, and then Northview is also in that, uh, OK Black alignment. There were some, I, I, you know, anytime you ask a group of forty-eight people, uh, how you like things, you're going to get a mixed bag of responses. Some liked the conference alignment, the OK red schools loved the conference alignment, didn't impact that. Uh, and even some schools within the OK Black and the OK Blue and the OK Green, there were winners and losers, uh, with the last, uh, with the last, uh, realignment proposal. Uh, while the proposal passed, there was still some measure of, uh, compromise, you know, districts didn't necessarily see it as a win for them, but it could have been worse, um, and so there was, there was a, a, a sense of agreement that, that we would move forward uh, as a member of the OK Black, and other districts agreed to that alignment proposal as well. Um, one of, uh, a superintendent in a neighboring district, um, was given a directive by his board back in June to, uh, consider options, because the alignment that they had been placed into, uh, didn't feel like it was a good fit for, uh, that district's Board of Education. And so this superintendent started reaching out to, uh, other superintendents in the area, uh, back in June, just asking for, for input and asking for thoughts. And, um, there were, there was a meeting in June that I couldn't attend, I was out in Denver for Jensen's, uh, wedding. Um, I don't remember if Todd attended or Matt Moffett attended, but there was kind of just a startup conversation, hey, what do you think? Are there some options? We don't necessarily, I think that this alignment, this current, uh, proposal is in the best interest of our athletes, and, and we're kind of exploring some options. Um, at, at the time, there really weren't any options, uh, other than stay in the conference or leave the conference, so you've got two choices. But we met in June to just gather, you know, who's, who might be interested in exploring something different. Uh, there was another meeting in July, there was another, uh, two meetings in August. So the conversation continued to move forward slowly, just trying to determine who might be interested in making a change, uh, or in, in, in leaving the OK Conference to do something, uh, to do something else. Um, being an, an analyst that I am, uh, I wanted to look at how our, how Cedar Springs has been impacted by the various, uh, divisional changes that have occurred over the last, uh, twenty years of the realignment, um, uh, conference realignment. And so, um, one of the artifacts that's provided to you tonight, uh, it was in board book, but I've also put a hard copy out for you, was I just created kind of a, an overview of, of where we were, who we've been aligned with, but I also wanted to know what the frequency was of participation with the various schools over the eighteen seasons since, uh, since two thousand and ten, uh, two thousand and twelve. And so, uh, back in two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve, Cedar Springs was in alignment, we were in the OK Blue Conference with Belvin, Comstock Park, Coopersville, Forest Hills Northern, Sparta, and West Catholic. Um, but then in, uh, in twenty twelve, so two years later, uh, Cedar Springs shifted into the OK Bronze Division. And, uh, when we shifted into the Bronze Division, we were with Forest Hills Eastern, Forest Hills Northern, Greenville, Northview, and West Catholic. Now, the Bronze Division was great, uh, for us in terms of geographic proximity, all of those districts were close, uh, to Cedar Springs, if you'll note, I did put a, a distance from our high school to each individual high school, so you could get a sense of how far we were actually driving. And then I did some further calculations, I asked Matt Moffett, what's, on average, how many trips do we make to each of our, uh, partner schools within the OK Conference, and he said, you know, usually somewhere between eighteen and twenty-two, depending on the season. So I went with the low end of that, so it did create, uh, an opportunity for us to just reflect uh, on an estimated number of miles that we were traveling from our high school to our opponent's high school per season for in-conference travel. So you'll see that in twenty-ten, uh, the twenty-ten, twenty-eleven school year, and then the twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve school year, um, each of those two years, our, our district, we traveled just under five thousand miles using that projection over the course of the school year for athletics to OK Conference schools. But then, as I shared, with the Bronze Division, it was a much better division for us geographically, our mileage dropped down to thirty-six hundred miles projected for the seasons two thousand and twelve, uh, running through the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen school year. Um, but then as we, uh, excuse me, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year, but then in two thousand and sixteen, Cedar Springs transitioned into the White, the OK White Conference, where we competed against Forest Hills Central, Forest Hills Northern, Greenville, Lowell, Northview, and Ottawa Hills. Uh, our mileage increased, uh, to just over five thousand miles for that year, uh, for those, uh, years at fifty-two, twenty. Um, and that was the first time the alignment, uh, was, uh, scheduled for a four-year cycle, it was a four-year alignment cycle instead of two-year alignment cycles, because districts didn't like the constant upheaval every two years getting a new alignment cycle. So then, uh, in two thousand and twenty, Cedar Springs found themselves realigned again, uh, this time we were, uh, aligned into the OK Gold, so that's where we currently are. Uh, in the OK Gold, we're competing against Catholic Central, Forest Hills Eastern, Kennel Hills, Ottawa Hills, South Christian, Thornapple, Kellogg, and Whalen, so it takes us to the far south end of the county, um, as we're now competing in the Gold. And what you'll also notice is then our mileage, uh, the mileage driven jumped thirty-nine percent, uh, up to just over eighty-five hundred miles per year now that we're traveling in the OK Gold. Um, I already shared as we project into the OK Black, uh, our mileage will increase to over ninety-five hundred miles. Um, and that's not just miles that our school district is putting on our buses, it's miles that our parents are putting on their cars as well. Uh, and our fans are putting on their cars as well to travel to, uh, some of the other schools in the OK Black, the Black. Is it going to be amazing competition? Yes, they'll be great schools. But the question that I had coming out of those meetings with the superintendences, why are we driving so far to have meaningful, meaningful competition when we could be having meaningful competition if the right other neighboring schools were really ready to make a change? And the reason we were driving so far is because that's how the alignment worked out within the OK Conference. The other thing that it's important to note is the far, uh, right-hand column is a reflection of the consistency percentage in terms of the number of seasons that we participated against each of those schools, um, over the last eighteen years. So you'll see that we only competed against Belvin for two years, so that was eleven percent of our cycle, Catholic Central twenty-two percent, Comstock Park eleven, Coopersville eleven, the highest, uh, the highest combination that we've competed against any of the schools listed, the twenty-one schools listed, were Greenville, we've competed against Greenville sixty percent, sixty-seven percent of the seasons over the last eighteen seasons, and we've competed against Northview sixty-seven percent of the seasons over the last, uh, eighteen seasons. And so, um, the whole point of this is we've, we're really not accomplishing the things that our coaches are seeking for us to accomplish on two fronts. Uh, one is the development of rivalries, because that's an important part of the athletic experience. For me, at, at, at Jackson Northwest, long times ago, it was great to beat, or to, we didn't beat them very often, but it was great to play Lumen Christie, Jackson Lumen Christie, even though they always crushed us, the few times we did beat them, that was like a sweet night. Uh, it was great to compete against Jackson County Western, uh, because they were the neighboring district in, in Jackson, and, and those games just meant more to us uh, as a district. And so for our athletes, similarly, you know, one of the things that we would love to try and accomplish is to, uh, establish a greater degree of regularity of opponents. And two is to be more efficient with two resources, time and money. Uh, by competing against districts in, uh, closer proximity to Cedar Springs Public Schools. So that led us to, led me to be in a meeting last Friday morning, um, just over a week ago, not this last Friday morning, but, uh, two Friday mornings ago, uh, when seven super, seven superintendents sat around the table and all confirmed that they were ready to go to their Boards of Education and ask, uh, the board, ask their board to consider, uh, drafting a resolution to withdraw from the OK Conference. And, um, to build, uh, create a new conference, or that, uh, really would accomplish two things, one, it would, uh, provide consistency for our athletes, uh, in terms of competition. Um, and then it would also be within a close, uh, proximity, so that we weren't spending as many hours, uh, on the road, uh, and also that we weren't driving as many miles, we weren't putting as many miles, uh, spending as much money on gas, uh, in order to get to the competitions. Uh, a couple of other things that came out of those conversations over the last few months, you know, one of the things that is really intriguing to me is, um, you know, the, the, our current relationship really focuses on athletics. Um, this new relationship with, uh, the six other schools who are interested in, in their, having the same conversations with their Board of Educations uh, as we are this evening, is to have, uh, some neat opportunities, uh, for, uh, debate, for forensics, um, for, uh, band competitions. We, we could do so much more than just compete, uh, against neighboring schools from an athletic perspective, there are other opportunities for our students to engage maybe in non-athletic ways, uh, with neighboring schools due to the close proximity and the just the openness to doing some things differently, uh, as far as how, how we operate. And so, um, this evening, I, I've included a draft of a letter, uh, or a laugh of, a draft of a resolution for your consideration, uh, just asking, uh, Commissioner Feenstra and members of the OK Conference Executive Council, um, for their, I guess, blessing of sorts on our, uh, withdrawal from the OK Conference. Um, I cited the why in terms of, uh, what's behind the ass. Um, you know, it's, it's, and, and I, one of the things that I included in, in the letter in closing was, um, you know, bigger isn't necessarily better, and smaller isn't necessarily better, better is better. And, and for me, in my professional judgment, because of the districts who are also willing to make this step, um, it will be a better situation for our athletes, for our coaches, for our families, and for our community to take a step, uh, outside of the OK Conference. And move in, in a new direction, and this isn't in any way a reflection, um, against the OK Conference, it's really about doing something that, that can be really special for our families and for our community. So what questions do you have?
Uh, more than anything, I, I, being a parent of athletes, I've I've experienced some of the, you know, the travel distance that you speak of. And it's rough, you know, when you have to travel an hour to get somewhere and then you're there all evening and an hour to get back. There's not a lot of time for additional homework or family time. It's just, it makes it rough. So I, I definitely felt that in the past few years. And looking at the conference now, heard that we would be going into the Black, it's like, okay, it's even further. So, yeah, I, I really appreciate the work that you've done. Media, it seems to make a lot of sense.
So for me, being a coach's wife and helping high school athletes for several years, this just seems to make a lot of sense. I'm so thrilled about the superintendents that all stepped out and thought about what we can do better and what would serve people better. I just think that that's groundbreaking and very proud of those conversations.
Has there been any talk about if this happens and it's super successful, other districts get, catch wind and go that, I want to be involved in that? Is there any, has there been any talk about whether or not other schools would be able to get involved with our conference or, Kent City is on my mind right now, so. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's, if, if, if the boards, so I, I, to me, it's, it's all or nothing. If we're the only ones that want to leave, I don't know that that's necessarily in, would, I don't know that that scenario would be in our best. Because we do have a, a great group of schools from a competitive perspective. It's just geographically more than what I, what I believe to be efficient. You know, we're not, it's not making the best use of our resources, time, money. So, you know, in the event that other districts were interested in considering or, or looking at a, a new, a new group of schools who were joined as, as a conference or as an alliance. You know, I'm sure that the, the group would, well, the group will come up with, with guidelines and bylaws that would guide that work of accepting new, new members. But I, I wouldn't want to find ourselves right back where we are in, in five years or in ten years when we're, you know, we're driving an hour, right, to compete. I just wondered if that had been discussed at all. Yeah, yeah, we have. And we talked about, you know, we're going to have to have, you know, we're going to have to have guidelines and bylaws. There are numbers that make sense in terms of, of a conference. Anything that's less than six doesn't make a lot of sense. You know, a, a, a group larger than eight or nine doesn't necessarily make sense. So you want to keep your groups in that, in that eight range. Eight is kind of ideal for most, for most sports. And so we're, we're mindful of that, but really we're, we're trying to focus just on, on the right now. Sure. And, and this has been a really, it's been a, it's been an interesting lift, to be honest. There have been a lot of, you know, we're texting at four o'clock in the morning and it's not even a snow day, but it's just, people are thinking and they're questioning and they're wondering what, what would this look like? What would this be like? And it's, yeah, it's been an interesting lift. And, and it's also, we know that it's not necessarily popular in the eyes of everyone. And I didn't bring it to your attention until I felt that we had a solid plan moving forward. And it really wasn't until, you know, we had a vision, we had a, we had a direction, we had momentum, but we didn't have, you know, a concrete collection of, of people in agreement until a week ago, right? So it's taken a little bit of time, but I feel really good about where we are.
Yeah, I think you addressed most of the questions I had. I mean, I too have, as a parent, experienced the long drives and it is, it is a lot. It does take a toll on families and, and athletes for sure. I think just for a point of clarification, just if you could highlight the schools that we would be in alignment with, who they are, but then also what were the key common factors that make them ideal partners?
So the most common, the greatest common factor was that everyone sought an opportunity to do a better job, to create a better collection of, of competitive opportunities for their student athletes. So that the other districts that are considering this move on the far east side would be Lowell and Greenville. And then Cedar Springs, Sparta, Kenala Hills. On the far west side is Coopersville and Allendale. So those are the seven districts that we're looking at moving forward with the new, new alliance. But then, you know, you go back to, you know, it, it would cut our travel distance in half to be in that, that closer proximity. And, you know, those districts, those would be the districts that we would be competing against. You know, one, one of the superintendents asked in a text string last night, well, can we get some commitments? Like, okay, we're in for ten years or we're in for, and I just laughed. I said, man, the world changes. Let's be amazing in twenty-fourteen, or excuse me, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five with an intention of being together. We're all making a big move for a reason. That reason's not going to change. We want to provide our athletes and our students with amazing experiences. We want to build rivalries. We want to have consistency of opponents for, for just to heighten that level of competitive flair. And we want to do it in such a way that we are being respectful and mindful of the time and money that it costs our parents and our community to support their student athletes. I used to laugh, you know, my son played a little travel ball and played some D-three baseball. And I oftentimes thought to myself, man, we drove three and a half hours. He struck out looking. I could have done that had he played a game in house. You know, I didn't need to drive three and a half hours to watch him strike out looking. Now, I also watched him do great things as well, but, yeah, we just want to be respectful and, and we, we want to create those reasonable experiences for our, for our athletes and also create conditions in which our families can be there to support them. Because that's, that's one of the coolest things, you know, those shared experiences are what really makes it, makes the high school experience special.
So Scott, I'm sorry. Scott, did you do a mileage custom on those combined schools since we're comparing year-over-year, what that would be?
I did, but I did not, I did not do an overall, I could run it up real quick, but I didn't do it in my spreadsheet in terms of the new, the new group. I've not yet.
Okay. And then the other wondering that I have is, because I'm not familiar with the impact that would have. Does it, does it impact the likelihood of having college scouts or scholarships attend any of the games? Do we have an expected impact that this might have?
No. I mean, scouting, scouts find great talent. They just find it, because in order for them to be successful, they've got to have great talent. So that, that shouldn't have any, any, any bearing on, on this work.
They're looking at kids that are working differently, you know, so they're, they're looking where they're looking.
I really appreciate the percentages that you're giving right inside. Over the years, I've been asked, why aren't we playing Sparta? I mean, traditionally, that's been our livelihood. When I went through that, was one of my lives. And I have parents that have lived here and that was their, their livelihood. And to see that, you know, it's only that one percent, just one, two years. And they were in our conference. So, yeah, I, I appreciate that piece of it. And I think the schools that are looking to be a part of this, that makes a lot of sense. And Greenville, Sparta, to have, I think it's a more view and.
Kenala, York is not.
Lowell is not. So Kenala Hills. Yeah, I think that's, that could be fun.
Any other questions? Missy, did you have anything you want to say or comment?
I just, everybody, I'll echo what everybody else said.
Perfect.
Okay.
All right.
So the resolution is on for action. If you're comfortable moving forward. If you're not comfortable, we can wait. The, the OK Conference Executive Council has a meeting scheduled on October twenty-fourth. We do have a work session on the twenty-third. So if we need a little bit more time to think this through, we can gladly take it. But if you feel comfortable and, and ready, we can forward the resolution as well.
So is they, is the, just another question, I guess, has the OK Conference changed, you know, what division we were in? What kind of feedback have we gotten and what kind of an avenue do we have for parents to give feedback into this thought as well?
You know, as far as this thought goes, you know, parents are welcome to come to a board of education meeting at any time. Looking in the rearview mirror, parents could have come to a board of education meeting and said, ah, this, the time that we're spending traveling to athletic events is just a, a real, a real stressor on our family or a burden that is very difficult for us. And they could talk to Mr. Simmons, they could talk to Mr. Moffett. Mr. Moffett is our voice on the OK Conference Executive Council. Mr. Simmons is on a OK Conference Principals Council. I sit on the OK Conference Superintendent Advisory Board. And so, you know, we have really three voices at the table in terms of the workings of the OK Conference. So really, it's just as people have concerns, just as they do with any aspect of our programming, they can come to any variety of people to help express their concerns.
Good. Thank you.
And it's pretty much three regional districts. There isn't an open forum of the OK Conference, other than, other than three districts that I can see.
Right.
Yeah, I just was, I just was really interested that they've moved around so much that, you know, from, from year to year, it seemed like they were moving us constantly. So I just was curious how, how, I want to hear your feedback from our, from our players' parents about, you know, why we don't have any consistency. So that would really force, really force the.
There's a lot to talk about it, but it's kind of, what are you going to do, right?
Again, in the defense of the conference, they were putting a proposal out there that made the most sense from their perspective and, you know, they looked at involvement first and then they, then they looked at geography. And then they looked at competitive, you know, score measures of competitiveness and they looked at programs that were offered. And so this was the group, you know, they just randomly put districts into, into different divisions. They, hours and hours were spent on that aspect of the work. And so it definitely was not something that anyone took lightly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one follow-up question. As far as you had mentioned, kind of looking at us, student population and everything at the conference. Are we comparable to the schools that are looking to participate in this?
We would be, yeah. I mean, it's, Sparta is a little smaller. Lowell is a little bigger, but we're very close in size to Kenala, very close in size to Coopersville, very close in size to Allendale, and very close in size to Greenville. So really, other than Sparta, the six of the schools are very close. But Sparta is super competitive. They're just gritty and they can compete and they won't have any problems. You know, one of the challenges that some of the states have faced is, you know, in the division that they are currently in, you know, they can field a freshman, a JV, and a varsity team. But other districts are smaller and they can't field those teams. And so then it's disruptive to, you know, to some of the smaller, to some of the, the districts who are in smaller divisions. We have that on occasion, but not to the same degree that, that other members of that, that seven person, that seven group, seven district group have. You're welcome.
So we do have that up for action tonight, I think, for our discussion. Won't be an issue, but we'll see if we can get there. All right, thank you. Again, that works, Scott. Moving on, we have spring in summer twenty-twenty-three, the O-K Policy Recommendation Revising, Revisions six-three.
So this, this policy is the purchasing of goods and services recommendation. Madi actually worked a lot on this just to help us align our policy language with some best practice in terms of efficiency and effectiveness. So I hope you have anything you want to add.
No, it's really bringing our, our policy kind of in alignment with some of the neighboring districts as well as making sure it is in agreement with our administrative guidelines that are currently in place. You know, one thing I sort of mentioned later, the state does annually revisit the threshold for bidding. This year, for fiscal year twenty-four, they are increasing, projecting to increase it about five percent, bringing it from twenty-eight thousand forty-eight dollars up to twenty-nine thousand five seventy-two. A little bit of an increase to that threshold as cost of goods continue to increase.
And thank you for the references that you provided, the different policies and things. And that's on for action today. Moving forward, item E, M A S B Delegate Assembly Representatives.
So for this item, we need someone from this board to serve Cedar Springs or represent Cedar Springs Public Schools at the M A S B Annual Conference in fall, in November. We need one representative, we need one alternate for the representative.
Remember on the last day, we need that. Do we have another meeting?
Let me go back and look. I know the, I know the. I want to say it's the weekend of the November eleventh. I know our chariot is getting ready to turn back and will punch them. It's. I can get that information.
And you can too. You can tell what's, right now, it's who's going to be calling, you know. It's not usually anybody's going to harm us over that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I checked and it's the same weekend. I've been at the library conference, so I won't be calling this year.
Yeah. I have November's Monday.
Thursday, November ninth. I got that feeling, so. Sent it directly to me. I wonder if you guys got it or something. Sure.
Okay.
You talked me into it.
You have Mac. You don't have an alternate, alternate right now? We have Matt, we don't have an alternate, alternate right now, but we have him.
So we do have till Friday, October twenty seventh.
So we can make the motion on Matt and if the alternative elect, alternate, let's step forward, they're willing to do so. We won't hold you to a board. Oh, there you are, okay, hi. Alright, Miss T, you have the alternate. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Miss T.
Yeah, I'm like my mom's talking to me, I forgot you were there. Alright. Okay, moving forward, we have the twenty twenty three, twenty four Parent Advisors for Special Education Representative Correction. We have some different parents stepping forward.
There was a mix up in the list that I had in the summer, my apologies. Uh in September, we approved Becky, April, Christina Cassidy and Jenny Craig. To serve on the base committee, uh however Becky and Christina were not aware of the fact that they were being considered. For the uh for for the committee, so Cindy, uh Metoxin and Christine. Were the two individuals who were actually, uh should have been on that original list. So it's a correction, uh the nomination, uh the people who would, that were recommended to be a part of our face advisory committee. Is Jenny, Cindy and Christine.
Thank them for volunteering.
Yeah.
No problem with that.
Thank you.
Moving on to item G, twenty one F funding flexibility with Mattie and Scott presenting.
So with this one, um there are a couple artifacts in um Word Book for you to just consider. Uh the first is a is a memo, really what twenty one F uh is, is it's the language. That talks about um taking classes virtually. Uh and so um much of the work around twenty one F relates to students attending class in Mission Virtual. Or uh some other types of online uh program providers. Uh but what we're looking at is, you know, some districts use twenty one F to also create some windows of opportunity. Uh albeit small, but some windows of opportunity to provide some flexibility uh in terms of. Uh the 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 use of instructional days, remote learning, particularly around testing. So for example, uh when we have um a a day of testing that, at the high school, for example. That may involve some students, some grade levels, but not all students, all grade levels. Um the the process of testing our students is a tremendous burden on the overall systems. That exist within the day to day uh work of of a high school. And so um there are times when during the testing cycles, it's easier for us to uh really just be able to focus. On students who are who are taking tests uh on those given days and to have other students. Uh not be present because we just don't have enough people to monitor a full, a full building of students. Uh if we are trying to also adhere to the very stringent testing guidelines that are given to us from the state. Um and so what twenty one F, what we can do with twenty one F uh is to pass a resolution. As a board uh acknowledging, uh and it, that language is included in the memo. Uh down at the bottom, uh in the highlighted version, uh so it it just gives us some resolution. That we can draft Cedar Springs Public Public Schools plans to provide in virtually. Uh instruction virtually for no more than fifteen days for any of the following, emergency closures, student testing days. Professional development in accordance with section twenty one F of subsection fourteen of P A one oh three. Uh twenty twenty three, so basically it just, we're acknowledging that sometimes we may provide instruction. For some of our students or all of our students remotely because of other considerations, namely uh emergency closures. Student testing days and or professional development, we would not be looking at doing any type of remote learning for professional development. I have no idea what emergency closures may come down the road. Um but definitely student testing days and definitely in the high school, we could see us being able to still count that day. As a whole day of instruction, uh even though not all of our students were present.
But snow days wouldn't fall into that.
Snow days would not fall into that, although, you know, for emergencies closure, but the challenge is. You know, we have, we, of the many things that we learned during the pandemic, I K three. K four remote learning is not. Not what it's cracked up to be, um but students in, uh you know, in uh higher grades. Who are more independent can do meaningful things remotely and still be engaged in the learning process. And so we'll see this being broad, you know, a broad uh approach. We really just see this a couple isolated days um and and really targeting the high school, maybe the middle school. Uh and Red Hawk for youth readers, but really it's, this would be a provision and it would just be a couple days of the high school protesting. For those couple days, um for the kids that aren't testing, that we're planning on. Teaching them remotely what some of those kids don't have Wi-Fi at home, for instance. You know, we have our one on one with Chromebooks, but if they don't have Wi-Fi, I know during the pandemic, we supplied them with that. Is that the plan still or? We would not provide Wi-Fi for one or two days, no, they would have to catch up. Okay. In different ways.
Okay.
So it's not a great solution. Uh Mr. Simmons, did you have anything else on that one? Or did we, did we talk about that?
Not yet.
Well, we could send packets, I mean, there are different ways, if we, if we identify students ahead of time, maybe we can provide them with some resources. That can help them, you know, it just says, it just says remote, uh you know. Instruction virtually, uh doesn't necessarily need to be one on one, it doesn't need to be synchronous. Uh there could be other ways that we can provide that instruction. And it's only for a, that's specific number of days. I mean, as long as we're giving those kids grades that you just can't.
We have extra badges.
Correct, correct.
And to make, and where's Mr. Smith? That is on for next time, yep, okay, great, alright. Moving on, item H, financial update with Matt.
Alright, uh just to cover a few things really quick, um I provided you the year to date for, uh the first year to date. Uh budget to actual for the twenty three, twenty four school year. Obviously, when you look at it, uh don't, don't panic uh with the uh five million dollar deficit that you see. We have not received our first state aid payment of the uh twenty three, twenty four school year. Uh we will receive that first payment on Friday, October twentieth. Uh at at that point, we will start to see that number uh shrink. Uh but we generally do operate a little bit, uh as we progress through the year, that number will uh go down and down. Uh shrink closer to uh where we budgeted. As you know, on the bond budget, um we have started to, we fully spent the series one bond. And have started to fund our projects with the series two. Uh we are still making some payment, final payments for uh Cedar View and the high school addition and renovation. Wrapping off the the initial part of Red Hawk. Um and then obviously still, we have some final payments on the roping project for uh the high school. Cedar Trails and. Cedar View. And we will start to see bigger and bigger dollar amounts being charged to the beach project. Uh we did have our count day last week, on Wednesday, the fourth. Um our butts in seat number came in at three thousand one hundred and four. Uh but that's a head count, that's not FTEs, so once we uh had shipped through all the numbers. I do expect our actual FTEs to be slightly lower than that thirty one oh four. Uh throw that into the enrollment stabilization calculation. Um right now, we're projecting out to a twenty three, twenty four state aid membership of thirty one fifty six. Which is down from last year, but is still um would be thirteen higher than what I originally budgeted. For uh if you do the traditional state aid membership calculation, we would be uh thirty two less than what we budgeted. So this year, we're, that enrollment stabilization calculation will be definitely helping our budget situation. But if they don't continue that into twenty four, twenty five, we will uh be taking quite a hit. With our state aid membership at that point, so it's something that, I I think I say this every board meeting, but you need to keep that. Out in front of us and uh plan, plan ahead for it. Um something I did not include in on the report, but just a couple things to note. Uh there are are several uh state aid grants that we will be applying for. Uh right now, information is somewhat limited, uh but one of, one of the larger ones is section thirty one A A. Uh they actually merged, there was section thirty one A A last year and then section ninety seven, which was for school security. They've merged the two now, section thirty one A A is for school mental health and school safety. Uh they're projecting funding of two hundred and twenty dollars per pupil for section thirty one A A. So for us, that would be approximately six hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. Uh that we have to, we would apply for it, if awarded, we will have until September thirtieth, two thousand twenty five. To spend those funds, uh fifty percent has to be spent on the student slash staff mental health. Uh initiatives, so we can look at hiring additional school sites, school social workers, counselors, nurses. Uh any mental health screening tools. The M D E does recognize that those are pretty uh difficult positions to fill currently. Uh we're not getting a hundred applicants when we post those jobs. So they have encouraged districts to be creative with how they're addressing uh mental health. And supporting students and staff in that um with their mental health needs. Um one, one thing that I've seen pop up and uh I've talked to Todd is, you know, Todd has, is passionate about. Overall fitness for students and how that leads to uh increased performance academically and just the overall wellness. Of our student body, so potentially could we use some of those funds to fund Todd's. Uh strength and conditioning, overall fitness initiative. We can also use those funds to uh support our new S R O officer and coordinate with local law enforcement. So we will be applying for that uh this month. And then we'll wait and see and maybe in March we'll know. Um another uh grant that is out there that Jen and I will be working on is section twenty three G, my kid's back on track. Um that is to fund uh before and after school programs, uh during, in school programs as well as summer school. Um and then really any additional academic services that students need that are um classified as being at risk or falling behind. Uh so we'll be reaching out, Todd had mentioned, he has some uh thoughts on some programs we can implement into high school. So we'll be uh bringing Todd in to get his feedback as well as other building administrators to uh determine what's the the best. Grant application to put for, for Cedar Springs. Um and then the final kind of large uh state categorical that is new this year is section twenty two L. Transportation funding, uh they will be, the state will be calculating ridership per square mile within the district. And then coming up with a formula to fund districts to help offset the, some of the cost of transporting students. Unfortunately, at this time, I don't know a whole lot more about how that formula will work and I really couldn't give you the greatest. And what that funding uh will be.
And truth be told, neither does the state, so we're in good company.
Yes, uh there was a number, a number of conferences last week that there were finance updates and they talked about this, but they said. You know, the state is still working through how all of these categories, categorical will really be uh allocated. To the districts, so there'll be, be more to come on this.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Matt, that was, Chris's words clear in the sense. Alright, moving on to the Cherry Health Grant applications, that is presented.
So um each year, we enter into a memo of understanding with Cherry Health. Uh where they provide um the items that, they provide the district with the items and services. That they'll be providing, the district provides Cherry Health with a list of items and services that we would be providing uh as in the partnership. Um Cherry Health, as you know, uh no longer operates a medical clinic on campus, uh but they do operate. They do have a a full time counselor who's working out of the middle school, one of the offices over in the middle school. Part of their grant application in order for them to, Cherry Health to be funded for that position and for other support. Uh mechanisms is, uh they need the Cedar Springs Board of Education to pass a resolution. Authorizing me to be able to sign the memo of understanding so that they in turn can sign the memo of understanding. And then put that in with part of their grant uh application, so the process isn't any different than what we've had in the past. The difference is they need uh the board to act, authorize me to then sign the memo of understanding. So that they're all good in the eyes of their grant uh givers. So. And I included that memo uh in the, in the board act. So.
So my question was, is it does take parental consent to be treated by that outside group? And that is stated in here in section three. Any other question? Alright, thank you. Item J, construction change orders at Red Hawk and Cedar Trails.
So we have three projects that we are um wanting to move on, uh or meaning to move on. Uh as far as um making progress, uh two of them are at Red Hawk. One of the projects is at Cedar Trails. Um they were, all three of the items are things that were not uh included in the initial bid packages. For Red Hawk, uh nor was it, nor was the work at Cedar Trails included in any of the bid packages either. Uh but what we have is, we've got a situation where we can utilize the bid packages that have been issued. And that have been approved and create change orders to those bid packages. Uh and move forward with the existing contractors who are currently on site, uh who are, who we have a good working relationship with. Um and they'll be, they were, they would be honoring their similar pricing to what they used when they won the bid initially. For the Red Hawk project. So two of the items, uh the first two that are listed, one is for emergency lighting at Red Hawk. Uh at the time when the bid packages went out, at the time that we did the initial exploration of the electrical system. At Red Hawk, um there was an assumption made that uh all of the emergency lighting. Uh features within that system were fully operational and fully functional. Um when we got into the work, uh we realized and they were doing some work with some of the panels. That the, uh at some point in time. that the, uh, at some point in time, uh, that emergency uh lighting system at Red Hawk was taken off the grid uh and was no longer functional. And so, uh, one of the things that we've identified is that we have need at Red Hawk to uh re uh engineer and to reinstall an emergency lighting system that would uh support the corridors, uh, would support the cafeteria and would support uh the gymnasium area. Uh, and so that's the first change order that you um that I've included in the packet. And uh, on that one, the total specs, uh, what they anticipate, what they anticipate that project to uh cost uh would be a change order in the area um of help me, Marty, if you're seeing it faster than I am. I think it is uh fifty-nine thousand.
Fifty-eight thousand.
Fifty-eight, eight forty. Um, would be the, the projected cost of that project. So that's the first change order that we're asking you to consider. Uh, the second is um bounce back on the screen real quick. Marty, you have that?
Uh, I have Cedar Trails carpet.
Okay, I'll take that please.
For, it would be the corridors, one thou- one hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars.
One caveat on the Cedar Trails um project. The um supplier recommended that if possible, we move forward on that approval of that particular change order uh as soon as possible uh in order for us to hit some um supply chain uh timelines. Our hope is to do that work over Christmas break. The vendor uh is confident that they can get that project done over that window while the district is closed. Uh, but in order to make that happen, you know, we have to have materials on site. If we miss the material uh window, then we would not be able to do that project over Christmas break. And so that's, that's the one uh change order that we are asking you to consider uh for approval for this evening. And then uh the last change order is uh the change order, the regard to, you know, as Cherry Health uh changed their provision of services and um moved out of Red Lock, it created another area uh in which we could uh use for district services. And um, you know, there was the, the original space that we had, the abandoned library, uh, that was a great space, but it wasn't necessarily big enough for all facets of district services. We did not have a good place for the technology group. Uh, we did not have a good place for the facilities team to be able to fully function in the district services hub. With Cherry Health pulling out and opening up that square footage, it now gives us more office spaces uh to utilize, but it also gives us an opportunity to create a technology center or a technology repair space. It's really just a a room, a classroom, but it would give a place for our servers to go, for our technicians to all be able to work together uh in a common space. But it also gives us a space for our facilities and operations team to work out of. Um, the change order on that one uh is for uh five hundred fifty-two thousand ninety-five dollars and fifty-six cents. And um, while that may seem like a significant investment, um, what this does, you know, we were initially looking at maintaining occupancy of the annex for technology and, and operations, facility operations. And so some of the numbers that we were initially looking at to maintain operations in the annex was north of one point seven million dollars for renovations because the, all the mechanical systems are in the old part of the building. Uh, and we were looking at upgrading those mechanical systems to just, uh, just to be able to support the annex. Um, the, the annual operating costs of this building is, is over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And so if you think about, while it seems like five hundred fifty thousand dollars is significant, it is. Um, but we'll make that up in uh right around forty months in terms of decreased dependence on the general fund. Um, so that will be a very short-term payback in terms of uh investment and starting to return, starting to get some uh return on that investment in terms of efficiencies uh to the general fund budget. And so those are the three change orders that we have, um, that we're asking you to consider uh for this evening. And they would all come out of the Red Hawk, the Red Hawk project. Um, in looking at what's on for action that is not there.
Right, we don't have it on, we can amend, we can have more.
We will want to.
It's, what do you need?
So I apologize for that. That was a last minute email from Steve, from Triangle this morning. Uh, just to get them to, to be able to order that carpet, the, the materials on hand.
And I do believe we discussed a week or two ago. Not specific to the carpet, but having it on the
The twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Yeah.
For action.
So initially, we were looking at for giving you the two weeks to consider, uh, which is good practice. But then when Steve sent an email first thing this morning, uh, saying, hey, we may be in a pickle with materials, uh, it, it, but if we're gonna take action on the, at least the trails change order this evening, that would be uh, that would be helpful. Then we could get uh sort of those materials ordered and uh be a good place for our Christmas break installation.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
I'm just trying to agree myself, but. I guess we'll see.
All right. All right, um. So we'll, we'll put that on the action. We'll see how the motion.
Do we have to move to put that on for action or?
I'll entertain a motion to add the change orders to action for the sacred materials can.
So moved.
Support.
Any, any other discussion? I'll add it on for action. Um, we'll do it at the beginning. So we carry on with the rest of the action. Change orders will be right at the beginning, but. Okay, all right. Got all that in?
I do.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, so that's change orders. Uh, twenty twenty-four summer tax resolution with not yet.
Uh, this is, this is the annual tax resolution that the board has asked to take action on. Um, and then we have to submit this to the local treasurers prior to uh twelve thirty-one each year. Essentially, this is allowing, uh, the district is saying we want to collect one hundred percent of our tax revenue in the fifty summer role versus splitting it fifty-fifty between summer and winter. The, the real benefit of this would be, um, you know, if you look at our, the year-to-date budget to actual, the local revenue that we've collected thus far is two point three million dollars. That's really helps the, the cash flow when we're waiting for that first October state aid payment. Um, on the, the debt service side, um, it allows us to make our November debt service payment without borrowing from the state. Um, so there's some savings there on interest costs as well. So, just uh, we don't have to take action on it tonight. You can take, you can take action on uh the twenty-third or the November meeting and that'll give us plenty of time to kind of get it to the treasurers.
This is standard way we've always collected taxes, no chance.
Correct.
All right, we'll see it on, at another meeting then. Thank you. All right, moving on to public comment. This should be a time that we hear from the um public, if they have any reason to address the board and wanted to share for their three minutes. Do we have any taken, anybody want to address the board? Going once, going twice? All right, we'll close public comment and we'll move on to our action items. So our first action items are the amended um action item, the change of to the change orders, and I would entertain a motion. So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
I would just clarify, this would be action item G.
Okay.
And these are for all three change orders presented. Uh, fifty-eight thousand on the side and I have a, something I can turn to.
Yes. And thank you for the G, what I wanted to do was you remembered it. Okay, all right, okay. So I'll call the roll. Vice President Schopner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, change orders are approved. Now we're at action item A. The twenty twenty-three, twenty-four parent advisors for special education pays representative corrections. We're going to have Jenny Craig, Sydney Metoxin, and Kristy Nan. I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support. Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schopner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Action item C is policy sixty-three twenty purchasing of goods and services. I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved. Skip B, skip B.
Four class novels.
Okay, going back to class B, I already passed out. Action item B, whole class novels for the high school courses recommendation. I would entertain a motion for as presented, and we have the note that there was no public comment during the time they were on display. So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schopner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Now, action item C, policy sixty-three twenty purchasing of goods and services. I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schopner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Action item D, M A S B delegate assembly representatives volunteering our Matt Schopner and Ms. Steve Bowser as the alternate. I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
I changed my mind.
Thank you.
Love your line.
Vice President Schopner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, and thank you. All right, action item E, Cherry Health Grant Application. I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support. Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schopner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. The last action item for this evening is the OK Conference Resolution, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support. Work.
Any discussion?
So just a question. So that resolution as presented is only, we're only going to take action if the other districts also plan to take action, because we aren't going to leave the OK Conference to to, to join a group of two, right? We need to have a significant pool. So I guess just want to make sure we understand the parameters of that for the motion.
We can withdraw our request to leave the conference. And I did the math, well, my computer did the math from uh the change in mileage would actually represent this forty, the thirty-seven percent reduction in mileage from the current black uh alignment to uh what we've been moving to. So, uh, just under six thousand miles.
All right. Any other discussion?
Just kind of want to thank you for your word on this again, so much appreciated.
All right, I'll call the vote. Vice President Schopner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. That brings us to communication uh for the evening, and I have no outstanding communication to the board. I've, you, I've shared everything with you, so you're up to date. And that has put some things in board book, and if you'd like to share now.
Yeah, so there are several artifacts listed in board books. So the first is the reminder that the Listen, Lead, Learn event uh with student leaders uh from throughout Kent County uh is going to be on, uh, it's a lunch meeting, it's on October thirtieth. So if you'd like to uh come, just let me know and we'll uh get you, uh, get you a seat at the table. The K I A S B Welcome Meeting in the Fall uh is going to be taking place on October eighteen. The focus of this particular uh event is on uh work-based learning and uh establishing some uh, you know, really trying to set the vision for shaping uh what career prep looks like moving forward. Um, so it'll be a really neat uh program, but one of the highlights of the uh K I A S B meetings is the dinners are provided by the uh culinary arts students from the Kent High School. It is unbelievable to watch them uh just showcase their gifts. It's such a cool night. Uh, so if you're, if you're interested in joining me, the uh R S B P is uh yet this week, so reach out to me and let me know uh as soon as possible, please. Um, then the other two uh agendas, uh items I listed, I included the SRO monthly report uh from deputies Rowe and Price. Uh, and then the last thing that I included is um, there is a suicide awareness and prevention uh Zoom webinar for caregivers in communities on uh Tuesday, October twenty-four. Uh, it was shared to me, uh, shared with me by uh Stacy Bosco who wanted me to pass along to you. It's really an opportunity for uh people in the community to learn more about uh, you know, suicide awareness and prevention. Um, and it's a neat uh, the, the program that's going to be provided by a, a really uh well-respected and talented speaker. Uh, there's a Zoom, uh, using a QR code that you can use to pre-register. The event is limited to the first five hundred uh people who sign up. And so if that's of interest to you at all, you should uh sign up as soon as possible.
Is that QR code going to be shared with our families?
Um, I had not intended for it to be shared with families yet. But I will confirm with Stacy Bosco. Do I have visions?
Okay.
Yeah, it's definitely something that could go out uh in a news alert. So yeah, thank you.
Okay, all right, there's planning future district events. We have a list of our upcoming social calendar. If you want to add those things to your calendar, that's helpful. So thank you for adding that. The last couple of meetings, that's been helpful.
Thank you, David.
And having no more business before the fall, we will stand adjourned at, what time do we have? Eight fourteen. Thank you.